The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everybody. All right, gonna have a public hearing ordinance violations. Everybody has that in your, in your packets. Issues on the name and properties or number two won't be discussed tonight. They're too concerned, are they?
Yeah, and none of these, well, I don't know if you want to start at the first one, you want to do them all three, none of them have changed. Nothing has been done for any of those three.
Nothing.
Nothing has, no.
No, no, uh, no getting ahold of you or.
There's been no notification, nothing has moved, nothing has, there's no attempt to take care of any of these things, nothing has been. No, and they've gotten their fines, they've gotten the letters to violation with the fines, and there's still no responses.
Well.
So.
The fine was on the, it's gonna be on the water bill? Or is it gonna be a separate?
It's a separate fine.
Okay.
Um, so what I do is I send them a letter with an invoice from the, with the fine on it, state the fine, the reason for the fine. And then they have twenty days. And then we do have a penalty, I think it's fifteen percent penalty that we approved. And then they have now this last group that we did last month, they all got sent the final that said, if you don't pay it, we're gonna assess it to your property taxes.
Okay, that's what I was wanting to know.
So how, how? How often would we assess the fine? Once a month, because they're.
Well, no, they get, they get the one fine, now, they get the one fine for this first offense, now say.
Three months later, nothing's happened?
Well, no. This is, they only get one fine for this. But they still have to clean it up, whether or not they pay their fine or not, they still have to clean it up, already gets assessed, and then we can go in, so the next step with the ones from last month is they have, they were served, they didn't do anything. And then we can send it to county. Or we can send it to our attorney, sorry.
So the finer going to taxes and the problem still can exist.
And we can abate it. And the next step is to get our attorney involved and abate, go through the abatement process.
And then the city goes in and cleans it up?
He goes in, yep, does whatever, yep.
And the cost of abatement, you can put that back on the property.
Whatever the attorney says, and then that problem is cleaned up, now, if they do it again, now then they, we start that process again, over again.
But it's only ever a one-time fine?
Well, for these, now, like I said, once we, if this gets abated and they clean it up, and then next year, in two years, it, it comes junkyard again, then we can abate it, then we send out that process again. So, yeah. Because the whole idea is, we don't want, the city doesn't want to collect all these fines, they want compliance.
We just want.
So that's all we want is comply, that's all the city wants is compliance.
We just want the properties cleaned up.
The fines is to try to have a little bit of council wanted teeth in it, because we're on the street, the city doesn't do anything about anything, so.
So, after it goes to the assess, assess on the thing? How long after that can then we abate?
Well, once they don't respond to the letter that they were served last, like, these ones will be served, and I think they have thirty days. And if they don't, then it goes right to Chris, and then he takes it from there.
Okay. Yeah, Doc, I had one question, what, what guideline determines the fines? I see one here. Second letter sent, fine a hundred and fifty dollars. The other one down here says, second letter sent, two hundred dollar fine.
For each one that's highlighted, each, each ordinance number, like, you look at the very first one.
The highlighted ones.
Ones, so it's fifty dollars per that violation.
Okay.
So some have two violations, some have four, just depends, yep.
All right, no, that makes sense. Well, as long as this is, this is what we've been told, or told, recommended, that we do.
Right.
By people, so. Yeah.
Yeah, we're, like you say, we need to point out, we're not in it to find people.
No.
Just in it to get their, help them, push them along to get their properties cleaned up.
Right.
So the neighbors that keep their property a hundred and ten percent don't have to live by one that keeps it thirty percent or twenty. So, that's the point of all this work for us. To try to make this community a better place to live. So is that it? Any other questions on any other ones? So the second letters were sent around September, so that's been almost a month again now, so.
Right. So, yep, this letter, because I think they get fifteen, it's fifteen days. So then I will get these letters out and get these served, if council approves it.
So they'll get their third letter?
This is the third letter, the third letter is the one that gets served, correct?
Is the number one within sight of here?
No.
No?
No.
Okay. How's that coming?
No change.
He told Eli that he was gonna come up with a plan.
That we're not on the same page, that's not the same one Robert's talking about.
Yeah, I know.
Oh. So.
Do we need to make a motion for you to?
Right, do you need, we need a motion to continue with the third letter and have them, have the residents served?
All right, somebody wanna make motion to send the third letter?
I'll make a motion to send a third letter to the properties listed here.
And would the, the number two, would that be getting in, uh, the first original letter then?
Yes, they already got theirs.
Oh, okay.
I sent it on Friday.
Okay.
So then hopefully by next month, we'll have, might be a couple months yet, but, yeah, no, we're gonna, I'm gonna hit that one yet too this year.
All right. Amy made motion, someone a second?
I'll second it.
Oh, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I have motion, motion carried. All right. No further questions, somebody make a motion to close the public hearing ordinance violation meeting?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Someone second?
I'll second.
Oh, in favor, say aye, I oppose, motion carried. Uh, we can open up the regular council meeting. The agenda, we have the consent agenda, A through H is all the regular business that we do each month, to make the meetings go a little smoother and quicker. Uh, if nobody has any questions on any of these, let me wanna make a motion to approve A through H on the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve A through H on the consent, consent agenda?
Someone a second?
I'll second it.
Oh, in favor, say aye. I oppose, motion carried. Community comment? Anybody with community comment? Don't believe so, um. Street update from Eli, Eli is not here tonight.
Yeah, I'm gonna.
You're gonna be Eli?
Yeah, I'm uh, I'm not nearly as good as Eli is, but I'll do my best.
Okay.
Eli read us both tonight, uh, he did do a fire incident that happened earlier today, so he's, could not attend the meeting, and he asked me to read his notes. So, if you have any questions, I may or may not be able to answer them, but I'll do my best, so.
Good deal.
All right, topic number one, um. Willard and Hulk rip rap. The contractor ordered and delivered the catch basin for the project. We are waiting for the contractor's schedule to allow for time to place the structure and pipe. Once that is complete, curb and gutter will need to be poured from the existing curb down to the structure. After that is complete, the area will need to be paved and bit of this curb extended to direct water to the structure. Now, I see lower in his notes here, um, written in pen, it says set catch basin tomorrow, so it sounds like, um, he's gonna go ahead and set that set tomorrow.
Yeah.
It's sitting up in the shop up there, you probably saw it.
No, I haven't been over there.
It's in the cold side, no.
Yeah, he called me today to let me know that, that was, uh.
But things are moving forward, the project, which is, which is good. Any questions on that piece that I can't answer?
Do you think Eli will be in tomorrow? Does anybody know?
He should be.
Yeah, he should, yep. Yep. All right, so, um, yeah, and if ever in the event Eli was bound up or tied up with something, uh, I would, I'm gonna assist too, I'm usually free during the days. The next one is the sidewalks, um. Eli contacted Chad Willie per the county agreement. Sidewalk maintenance can be cost shared with the county as long as the quotes are sent and approved by the county before the work is done. A few quotes were solicited for the panel replacement and included in the packet. And then he has no W W quote included thirty-seven inches, thirty-seven feet of curb, which was not in the evidence. Little difference between the two quote. An evidence and quote included panel replacement on the three hundred block of Main Street. Prices were higher than expected. Additionally, full and be thought, ideally a dollar amount could be approved of a panel replacement, and when the concrete curb is done for the storm drain on Hulk, that contractor could also do some of the sidewalk panels that are high priority. Going street at Clark Street and the three hundred block of Main Street are some of the worst. And there's no panels along the county road could be considered since Blueworth County will cost share. So I guess that's up for you guys to discuss the.
He suggested, um, I think I put, I kinda wrote some notes on the side of there too, that if, yeah, those are mine, um, if council would approve like a dollar amount um, instead, or we can table it until he comes back too, so. Because he had said, you know, even if they approve like maybe five thousand to get the major ones done, or if they wanted to do ten thousand, and that could include some of the cost sharing with Blueworth County. So. And he's not saying that he wants those bids that are in the package, they're just kind of examples, because he thought they were, we could get something a little better. And just kind of let you know what he was thinking of, what needed to be repaired.
The guy's gonna run out of time too here, the middle of October, so, you know, he had maybe another thirty days, depends on the weather in Minnesota. And would we wanna put a dollar amount and see if we can move forward on some of these, or we're gonna need curb down there at that new catch basin?
Yeah, yeah.
So we do need that done.
That seems like it would be a good thing to at least give him a dollar amount, it'd be a good thing to see if we can do some cost share with the county.
But again, I think time is gonna be.
And if they don't get it done, well then, you know, it's not the end of the world either.
I wonder. I think our main thing right now is if we get that catch basin set, get that curb put around that corner and direct the water there, and I don't know if we'll be able to get like W W in to do a small little blacktop job, yep, I would think so, maybe, hopefully.
So what's the dollar amount that you put on it?
Said here on the notes on the side, five thousand would be the minimum, and ten thousand would be better.
The cost share with Blueworth County.
Share with the county, but, um, doesn't mean you have to spend the whole amount, it's just enough to give you some seed money to get the project going with the catch basin, and then if there's time to catch a couple of that, whatever, otherwise it probably would be put off till next spring.
Okay, so Safe Step, that's a.
That's separate, that's separate than what, from what Brian's talking about now.
Okay, but that's a, that's another concrete company, or?
That's another topic.
Okay, so where were, Evansons and W W are the only two?
Yeah, and like I said, he said that's just kind of an example of what he was thinking that needed to be done, not saying that they're gonna do it, that he was gonna have them do it.
I'm just trying to, but, uh, this one's got four price breakdowns. Well. One hundred ten six. Yeah, that'd be fifteen.
She's the only one that the county will help on.
No. Um, there's some on the three hundred block of Main Street, that's county road.
Well, it says thirty total repairs, that's what I was curious.
Oh, no, that's different.
They're bidding the same things, it looks like, uh, blacktop's a little bit more expensive, five thousand or so, thousand or two?
Well, it's still concrete, it's just W W blacktopping, and they all bring in a concrete crew. Whether they sub it out, or?
Oh, yeah, we probably better put a dollar amount so we can get it done this time.
Like I said, I don't have a problem adding these numbers up. Um, saying that we could put, even if it is ten thousand toward the project, but with the understanding that it doesn't, has to be, have to be spent. Um, it can be used, yeah, to get the project going, I would like a little better breakdown of what.
Well, I'd like to see what, where some of these are, and what.
Yeah.
That number three on W W seems awful high, just. Steps.
Yeah.
Compared to all the other stuff.
Anything pertaining to the steps is not part of the conversation, um, he just doesn't, that doesn't include those steps on Hulk, Hubble? The Hubble?
Hubble.
Yeah. That doesn't include the steps on Hubble. That he, that he's talking about getting a a dollar amount for.
Okay. So that's a different, but.
That's, yeah, that's not.
Remind me, now, we talked about steps, we talked about doing that.
That needs a little more conversation.
Uh, if that was gonna be a shared, um, problem with the owner and the city?
Yeah, that's gonna need a little more conversation, I can't remember why or whatever, but, um.
Yeah.
You know, there's a little more conversation that needs to be done into that.
I would agree with that, because we can't just throw that at each individual residence, holy cow.
Oh, puts the others three, four, five, so. Being that it's so late, you know, like I say, do we even worry about any of that on the county road for this year anymore?
Don't have to.
Don't have, no, you just need some seed, some spending money for the structure and the curb and the, uh, uh, blacktop.
You know, if we, we award this, and they come in here and they plan, and they come in, uh, fifth of November, and they tear it out, and it starts snowing and raining, and just really turns bad. I mean, it's all hard service right now, we could really maybe wait till next spring, and maybe there would be, maybe some better quotes, maybe, you know? Because some of this seems awful high, I don't even know what a yardas man is now at all, I guess that's going up again, I, I believe.
Somewhere in the vicinity, what, one eighty to two hundred? I was told.
It's high, it's really high, I don't.
That's just my thoughts, rest of you can contribute what you think.
Yeah, I wish.
Well, if they set that at catch basin.
Yep, that's our number one.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of an important, so I wish he was here to tell us what he is, his feelings on what is important or what is needed in a timely fashion. I do agree with that.
Project down there.
Be here in the next.
Needs to be.
Two weeks.
Well, that's what he was thinking, yeah, if they're gonna be here to do that, if there was something else that council decided they wanted done, he, they could do it then, but it's perfectly fine to leave it, you know, and table it, and we can discuss it next spring, you know, get the catch basin in, get that stuff done.
Well, otherwise, we could take, give him, say, five thousand dollars with not the, but say it does not have to be used, only if it's, only if it's, um, you are a good instance for a timely fashion, if they were here and could do something other than the major ones along the county roads. Makes sense.
You know, there's some panel replacement, that's pretty easy, that's just flatwork, you know?
Yeah.
That there, that could be done, you know, maybe we should five thousand.
Do the worst one.
X amount of dollars on there, and if they can get it done this year, they can yet.
I would let him do that, I would say five thousand dollars maybe is a halfway decent number that they could um, get it started, not complete these whole projects, but, uh, at least it's there, and we don't have to wait another thirty days to vote on something. If they come and if they could do it five thousand, but not just to say to spend it, if it works out, use it, if not, we'll wait till next spring. Is my thought, I guess.
I guess, yeah, put that curb down there for Hulk Street, right?
Yep.
Number one priority.
Yeah.
If he has somebody come in and they got some time and do some, wanna do some flat panels, take it as far as that five grand and go and go call for call, good. Yeah, that work for everybody.
Yeah.
Somebody wanna make that motion, that five grand then?
I'll make the motion to, uh, set into, uh, an account for that project, five thousand dollars, only to be used, uh, per importance of project and time.
Curb being number one priority, any money left over, and they have time for panels or whatever.
Did the curb get agreed on already? For the price of the curb, no?
No.
We heard, oh, no, okay.
No, I think all we got is the catch basin and the digging and the
Yeah.
The line going back.
All right, sorry.
No, it's, uh.
Uh, Jim made that motion, someone a second?
One second.
Oh, in favor?
Aye, aye, opposed, motion carried.
All right, please.
Um, the next thing on the list is, uh, Safe Step was here. They're a company that helps get rid of trip hazards on public streets and side, or public sidewalks. So Eli worked with an estimator from Safe Step to evaluate the trip hazards on city sidewalks. They perform work statewide, and they're on the state purchasing contract list. And have been doing work in Amboy on Main Street for the last couple of years. They have a patented process that saw cuts lips in concrete to an ADA compliant grade. The evaluation was completed and would also be subject to Blueworth County cost share. Some of the lips that would be cut over the, cut near the fire station are bad enough that the plow cutting edges have been catching on them. So that's the Safe Step, I don't know if there's a quote in here for Safe Step, that you guys can look at and decide if that's something you wanna start uh, doing the high priority ones first, and pick away as time goes by, or, oh, that works.
Yeah, they've pretty much basically ground them down and make them, make them, but it's got total thirty total repairs here.
Yeah.
Cost share with the Tony, forty-eight hundred bucks, city has, uh.
Seven total.
Seven. So these panels that we're talking about replacing on the county, is that the same ones that are misaligned here, that this Safe Step could, uh?
No.
No? Is there anything we wanna work on this year, I mean, we're a month from being froze up for the rest of the year, things will move again for, during the winter. They get under consideration for next spring, or?
Sure.
At least they got it noted, they probably know exactly where it's.
But certainly are.
If that's something that, I wonder if you can lock in that price, even if it doesn't get done this year?
I mean, I don't know.
Fair.
Either that, or do you think, well, I don't know, I guess if they come in, they probably wanna do everything. Could they come in with a hit list and try to get those ones that are causing the major problems with the cutting edge?
Uh, yeah, that's what they do, they, they prioritize the work, because they do those, and like, in Amboy, it's been going on for several years, so.
Yeah.
And hit the big hitters first, and then you can spread it out.
Well, you know, the county streets is forty-eight hundred as a cost share, it's fifty-fifty, right? Be only cost to the city twenty-four hundred bucks, maybe we should, uh, maybe we should include these two costs here and, uh, get it done.
One thing that I would know, it's not in his notes, but I would say no, identified and documented trip hazards. If we don't fix them, somebody you are into, you know, then potential liability issues we come up from
Great.
The fact that we, we identified and, and, uh, so.
Yeah, and the way this country works nowadays, that, that's a very good point, you know?
Thing is, Sue said the county's gotta.
Approve it, yeah.
Beforehand.
Yeah.
When's the next meeting?
I don't know, I usually, once I get it, I send the information over.
They, they meet twice a month, I believe, the county. Pretty sure they do. Well.
It wasn't very long, and I got it back, I got the approvals.
Brian brought up a good point, should we go for this whole total package here, and, uh, hopefully the county will do some cost share, and it won't cost us that much to eliminate trip hazards?
Be done with it.
And then you're locked, and you're hopefully locked in, then, on their list, yeah.
Does somebody make a motion to go with whether it'd be about fifty-one, two hundred dollars total, but then maybe cost share with the county?
With some of it, yeah, so. Yeah, let's make a motion to go ahead and, um, proceed with this. Um.
Safe Step.
Safe Step, and then with hopes of getting county approval.
County share, cost share.
Yeah, cost share. The city ones, they could, if they got time, they could come right away and do them.
Yeah.
Yeah, they probably don't wanna come twice, where they ought to.
Then six, one, two number, but it doesn't.
Yeah.
You know, we can get the county to prove it faster.
Well, that can be done up until, you know, the snow gets deep in reality.
Yeah.
So. Jim, were you in the process of making that motion?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, yes, I'll make that motion to, uh, approve the Safe Step and, uh, county cost share on our, uh, streets and sidewalk repair, so.
You made a motion, someone a second?
Second.
Scott seconded, all in favor, say aye.
I oppose, motion carried.
Yeah, the next thing that is on Eli's list is a paragraph about the steps that you pulled, you're just talking about, and this is his take on it, and so it says here that resident had inquired about getting a sloped sidewalk in the boulevard replaced with steps. At the last meeting, it was discussed that the city would cover that. The line item in the W W quote was four thousand three hundred and twenty dollars for the steps. Will a precedent be set if the city covers these steps and another resident requests them? One way to avoid that would be to decide that if it is justified in this case by the existing potentially unsafe sidewalk that's already there. But those were his concerns, are you setting a precedent for future homeowners to request steps? Um, uh, in this case, you could justify it because the, the slope sidewalk that's there now is hazardous, I guess, so.
And this is between the sidewalk and the curb, right?
Correct.
That is our property, city's property. So, but I mean, that, that bid, wow.
Holy cow, yeah.
That seems very, very, very high. I don't know if we'd have time to, uh, did anybody else could get a bid on something like that?
Yeah, maybe Eli could get another bid and.
Yeah, because that, that just seems.
As long as he knows you guys, your intention is to do, to do it if we get a good quote.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, so that one you kinda tables until he gets a better, different quote?
Yeah, let's see if we can own that price.
Either, you were saying that the, because it's from the curb and that it's city problem, is that something that you could set a precedent that it could be split fifty-fifty with the homeowner in the city?
Not sure.
Or is that something?
Check the ordinance. Check the ordinance as a.
Yeah, how about our ordinance? I was really gonna say.
Yeah, I don't know what the um. You know, an engineer can tell you what grade a slope can be at, you know, on a sidewalk before. It's not ADA compliant anymore and stuff like that.
Yeah, get them in compliance.
Since it is our sidewalk. You would want to make it safe, same as your safe step. You'd wanna. You wouldn't want one that's more than the intended slope. I don't know what that grade is. I don't know what that next of the condition.
Yeah, there enough land there to make it uh.
Well, it's an additional twelve hundred dollars.
For sides.
Yeah, for sides. So then on top of that. Four.
Yeah, we're not.
Four thousand, that's.
We're not putting sides down.
Oh, no, I'm just. That's really out of line.
That's a lot of money. Boy, just said to me, we gotta make sure that we. Set aside. Five thousand dollars for every resident that comes in and says they want. Or. Or we have to figure out if there's a precedent where we. Pay half, they pay half or. Then a little bit more thought would be put into it rather than just say, hey, I want a new sidewalk.
That that can't be over five feet wide, can it, or long?
I did.
So it's thirty six inches wide and if it's five feet long from the sidewalk to the curb, my God. That's a lot of money, forty three hundred and twenty bucks.
Yes.
I mean, really? Puffta.
Yeah.
We better see if we can get.
Yeah.
Little better deal on that.
That on to Eli, that he can do some more.
Yeah.
Research on that. On the next topic that's on his list is trees. Edenville has a fall sale on trees, including many that would be desirable for our parks. There's some pin oak, red oak. So. Satu la. Red maple and elm. They are great looking trees that are roughly ten feet to fifteen feet tall already. And will grow to about forty to sixty feet. He hopes to plant four to six of them in Thunder Valley Park. And. This fall. Prices vary from a hundred and fifty to two fifty depending on the species and availability. He was wondering if fifteen hundred dollars was a good number to set aside to spend on trees? And get them planted yet this fall.
We cut down like three, three ash trees, I think, in the ballpark, you know, and I would think. The city would take it. You know, and start replacing trees, you know, and fifteen hundred bucks would get you six of them at two fifty. You know, some of the good better trees there that they got listed, you know.
And they're already at a height of ten to fifteen feet.
I know, yeah.
Wait ten years for them to. Light a little shade.
Is this just down at the ballpark? Or the city park too?
Thunder Thunder Valley Park. And City Park.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So something.
It is in our park, but it's still maintained and been in the city's control for seventy years, I think.
Yeah.
He can plant both himself that big of a tree?
Yeah.
Yeah, he'll do it.
I don't know.
Um, somebody want to make a motion for uh six trees is. Or up to fifteen hundred dollars, maybe you can get. Eight trees, you know.
Yeah.
Just council have an idea of what type of trees they want him to get? Are you gonna let him choose that?
I would let him choose it.
It's a good hardy, you know, them oaks or red oak and the red maple. They're good hardy trees. I don't know about that pin oak, but I was over there. I seen. I believe I seen that it's kind of a faster growing oak tree also. Got the original looking oak leaf.
Always a good idea to plant a variety of trees because.
Yeah.
At all at one, and then a disease comes, you lose all your trees.
Right, like an ash. We don't want a tree right now.
Probably don't want elm. And. Uh, we're. Oak will.
Regular oak takes a little longer, but.
Yeah, but they're hardy.
Yeah.
Um, I'll make a motion to set aside fifteen hundred for trees for the two parks.
Did you made a motion someone a second?
A second.
Amy second all in favor. I I. Motion carried.
Okay, next item. Some representatives from Ballack Equipment were here. Um, Mark. What came on, came Lima? Ben. And he's the engineer and Brandon Johnson met with me and Eli and Robert also for a little bit. Um, in time to gather information and uh. And data. The meeting went pretty well and Mark was had already been working. On the sewer extension project uh behind the locker there. So we had a really good talk. It was really nice to have the actual. Engineer here because I can speak his language and he and I really understood each other and. And um. I think I think he's gonna be alright. I actually, I liked him because I was a little skeptical. At first, just to be honest, but uh. I, we had a great conversation. He's very respectful and uh. Uh, he knows his stuff for sure, and they had already done. A whole bunch of background research on our. Recently finished projects and some of the projects that we had been. That we had kind of on the. On the back burner. And he had it, he he knew everything. He went through our water and wastewater. To see if we had any violations or anything like that or any concerns. Um, he had, he was really familiar with our. City and our infrastructure before he met with us, so that was. It was pretty nice, so.
Yeah, it was kind of encouraging to have somebody come with some background and.
Yeah.
He's here.
Impressive.
You know.
Because I'm not crazy about salespeople, but I can talk to engineers, so. Um, it was a great meeting, it really was, so. Good deal on that. Um, the no dumping signs were placed after another illegal dumping of dirt and concrete occurred down at the uh. Compost site. And um. That's done. Our.
Can I add something to that? I mean, we have cement pieces down there. And I think it's always been kind of the way it's been is if you were gonna take out a small area of cement. That the city's providing you an area to get rid of it. Not for demolition of a built. Efficiently placed. Couple panels of uh. Sidewalk to your house. We allow that. Would that sign ever say dumping by permission?
Yeah, I think it does. Why even? That's what um. Was recommended from Andrew Hagan that. It said on there, no dumping. Other than what's authorized by the Good Thunder City Council or whatever is.
Because for our ordinance, we don't have dumping of anything other than the compost. And those were put up there because we had some. Issues and it was kind of, that's just those signs are a temporary thing until we get something better, but it was just to kind of con- curb some of the um activity. That's been going on.
Right now, there's rock and. Regular bricks. Down in that pile.
Hmm.
Oh, yeah, it is.
It needs to be hauled away.
Either way, it was gonna, when he gets that new bucket, he was gonna try to maybe haul some of that. On our own. City time.
Yeah, he is.
So. Did he get that bucket yet?
Last time I talked to him, he said it was coming shortly. I don't know if you got it or not.
That's what I was.
Probably seen a bill on it if he did.
Yeah.
Seen it yet.
So it must be still pending. Um, Eli met with. Troy Walsh from the LMC Insurance to do a walk through of our playground equipment. A few maintenance items were identified and he's working on getting parts and ordered. So they can continue to be well maintained and not become a liability. So he is working on the playground equipment to make sure it's safe and and up to speed. Um, under the equipment. A northern tractor, the tire quote is listed in the packet. The adapter plate for the tractor has arrived. And we're still waiting for the bucket. Hoping to, what would all the concrete this fall before? The tires are replaced. Um, it does, the tractor really does need tires. Needed it when I was. Using it last winter. Um. He got, he got every bit of tread life out of him, I believe. I think he's looking here for you to approve the quote. There's two quotes, one from Bowerbilt and one from D and K in Amboy. Pending your permission, he'd like to get the tires.
Yeah, well, those quotes aren't even, I didn't even. Hand in the comparable because they're not even close.
One's got disposal fee of ninety dollars. The other one's got disposal fee of, I guess it would be uh. Uh, seventy three dollars uh. The one does want the. Tractor at Amboy though. You see that? They want that in, and the other quote is for to come here and replace them on site. So I mean. That means drive it over there. Somebody come and get him, come back home. Drive back over there, get it. You've got about four trips involved.
Yeah.
And, you know. Yeah, there's a. Eight hundred dollars difference also.
Yeah.
So. Tire wise uh.
There's almost five hundred dollars difference, just service call and flat right yard. There was. Why does it say skid steer?
Yeah, uh, because they're so small on the front. You know. They're they're kind of like a heavy duty skid steer tire up there.
Okay, why?
Well, yeah. And I don't know about on Alliance, you know. There's all kinds of tires anymore and this other one here, it says skid steer and a. USC stable built. Use stable built? I don't know what that is. So. It's. Dollar savings there, but also. Some time invested in driving back and forth. Because you sure couldn't get it. Have somebody come and haul it over there. That would cost more than the difference in the tire quote.
On that. Boy or whatever, it says guessing on time to get job done. Did two hours, but could change depending on time.
Yeah.
So really that. I think if that takes more than two hours, that bill's gonna go higher. The way I read it.
Hmm, right? Well, you would hope, but. It's in. And it's not all rusty and as far as we know, everything looks.
Yeah, looks good.
Yeah.
No, I've dealt with power to Bowerbilt before with my Class A motorhome. I blew some. Tires up at the state fair and they came on the fairgrounds and replaced my stuff right on site. They had a. Bucket equipment. It went really smooth, but.
I don't know if we're getting a little bit better tire here, like the back two. There's uh Bauer bills is nineteen twenty. The other place is thirteen thirty six uh. Are we getting that much better tire? Couldn't tell you. Tire per 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 tire is nine sixty versus uh. Six sixty eight.
Yeah.
And you'd have to make an appointment, I suppose. We're here. We get a bucket, we get our cement hauled out, you know, you could call them and that tractor would be sitting in the shed anytime. To get it done and just be done. Yeah, I don't know if that's. The point of getting a bid and, but yet. We can look at both of them and see which one's more feasible. Yes, one's gonna cost less money, but is it is feasible? I don't know.
I'd pay more.
Pardon?
I'd pay more to have it.
Have it just here done and be over with?
There's some value in a headache of uh.
Me?
Trying to figure out that scheduling and stuff. And all that, that guessing on time, that just kind of gets me. If they guaranteed that that, otherwise they could say, oh, it took us eight hours. Well.
Nah, I think they got that hit pretty close there. The tractor hasn't been outside in the that much. I mean, everything should be in excellent shape, just pops tires off and. Pop back on and the rims won't even be rusty. I mean. I mean, want to make a motion on one or the other? Which is most feasible?
Did Eli make a? Hint toward?
His up.
Okay. I would make a motion to go with this Bowerbilt tire estimate.
Amy made a motion to go with Bowerbilt. Uh, someone a second?
Well, seconded.
Jim seconded it all in favor, say aye. I oppose. Motion carried.
Okay. Next item, uh, going through his list of equipment things here. The international truck, he got the radiator replaced. And he's waiting to reseal the transmission pan. We'll continue to troubleshoot and. Uh, repair the standard control and things like that as time permits as we get into fall. So he's he's got that top of mind as far as.
Yeah.
The maintenance done. He's doing a nice work.
Yes, he is.
Uh, the sweeper, uh, the gutter broom got replaced. Um, he's hoping to finish the season with the main room and then. Spend substantial time this winter repairing and replacing worn parts. So he's gonna go through the rest of the sweeper this winter and uh. Uh, he had talked about the conveyor. Uh, the conveyor shaft and the bearings and.
Yeah.
Really doing a deep dive into making that thing track straight.
Yep.
And uh, and stuff, so uh, for now, the gutter broom's been done and. That's it. About the pond chemical building that's up and framed is waiting for the steel now to be put on. Um, it should be completed yet before the end of October and close to it. Uh, the crew had a lot of difficulties laying out the setting of the. Post due to the amount of buried electrical conduits in that area. Um, they shifted the placement of the building at least three times. To get the post in the proper depth. Uh, issues including making sure there was proper clearance and from around the panels. So they had three feet of clearance in front of the pallet panels, which is required by the. Um. Electrical uh codes, but then uh they had their marks on the ground and I said, wait, you need three feet in front of that socket for your meter. If you need three foot this way, three foot this way. Otherwise it wouldn't be the code. So they they shifted the building this way and then they shifted it. They had to shift it three times. For their posts just to avoid, there's so much electrical in the ground there and it wasn't exactly where the. You know, you can, when you locate them, you can only get your marks as. General area, but in the end, they got them all set and that that part's done. It looks nice. The size of it looks nice. Um, it's not so big that it's a. Looks like a warehouse or anything, but uh, it'll do a nice job to help. The security and uh. Long volume of that tank. Let's continue to move forward. The pond fence. Uh, while the building was being framed up, uh, Eli worked on the fence. I don't know if you guys get a chance to drive down there, but he did a whole bunch of tree trimming. Um, he borrowed my. I have a auger at home, a post hole, a powered auger. He borrowed that and put a wooden post in the corner by the um. It'd be the northwest corner um for a little more strength and then he's got rolls of fence down there. You know, make that. I'll make that fence like new uh in that area where the geese were walking back and forth and eating soybeans. Um, all the existing posts were pulled. And the ones in the area was regraded. So, yeah, he made it so it would slope and the water would flow away. Instead of pounding there by the old lift station structure. So he regraded that area and then reinstalled the posts. Um, it'll make mowing a lot easier. And uh. This work's also gonna continue as time permits in October. Uh, quality was, quality flow was here for our lift station for the replacement of the check valves and the uh pump guides. For the two smaller pumps in the lift station. Um, that's done. That went really good. We were down there. From. I don't know, seven thirty in the morning, and I think they were done by. Two, two thirty in the afternoon, something like that. Um, I had set ones there sucking out the water as it. To keep the, to keep the area dry while the guy was working in there. And uh, Simmons only had to dump once. We dumped it into the primary pond and then he went back and by the time it was ready to. Suck suck down again, so we kept it dry for the guys. Um, that was a good project and that's a wrap. That one's done. Um, streetlights. Coca Electric determined that there is a break in the underground. Waring. The the direct berry wires that feed the streetlights on the north side of Main Street. They were able to bypass the failed circuit and feed everything off of one circuit. The lower circuit draw of the new LED streetlights made this possible. If other circuits were to fail, new lines would need to be bored in on our main street. So for now, it's got a band aid fix on it and it's working. But in the future, that may have to be, you know, they probably rod in. They do all that underground work now with. Without even tearing up the street most of the time, so.
Which it'd have to tear up some uh.
Sidewalk.
Sidewalk panels to get at them, you know?
Likely, yeah.
So I mean, and maybe all that sidewalk replacement panels down there should be put on hold until.
Maybe.
Next year.
Yeah. Um, so that was just to let you know what that situation is. Um, the striping was completed for the crosswalks and the diagonal parking. And uh. The lights on on the welcome sign near the county shop were replaced with some newer brighter ones.[1791.21] So take a look at that when you're all driving around. That is it for Eli's report.
I think those crosswalk paintings are a very good idea because when the daycare is out there, they got all them little tops on the line and they stay in the line. So.
I noticed something the other night. I was coming through town. Nights ago. And the restaurant was so busy. I mean, there was cars all up and down Main Street, all in the fire station, all up that side street. And a couple of old people and a bunch of kids cut up between the cars. From the restaurant there over to the fire station and I just well smoked them. And uh, I I thought to myself, why didn't they just go down to the crosswalk and cross on the crosswalk and then go this way? Somebody's gonna get hit there. Uh.
Well, you see it all the time.
All the time. In there. So I mean, I don't know what you guys can do. You guys probably can't do it. But I just wanted to point that out that if the people would use the crosswalks, it would be twenty times safer than. Gutting out between the cars like they do because they don't even look. They just start running for the the kids especially. They're running for the restaurant and. They're excited. I get it, but.
Yeah, that's a common sense virtue that.
You're not gonna correct that problem.
No.
No, as long as there's parking and there isn't a fence there to shove them to the crosswalk, it's not gonna happen.
They just dread the day.
That's. You know, the diagonal parking too, you know, there's. Some issues there, so.
Is the one got corrected or is it still? Their vehicles or I I guess I never paid.
Went by there, yes.
Yeah, it's a topic of discussion. I've had discussion with Andrew Hagan and. Um, it's going to be a continually watched and if it doesn't. Change from being a problem. Um, we will have to do more discussion on designating. Some handicap spots. And then if they go park in them diagonal, anything else, it'll be. A two hundred dollar fine per vehicle per spot. I mean, there's way two ways of playing these games. People can just. You know. Use common sense, park how you're supposed to. Uh, be courteous and not park in front of a church when they, you know, they have church services on Sunday. Um, or like you said, well, in front of the church, it might not be a bad idea anyway. There's elderly population.
Or use that the model.
Temporary ones, little rims. Yeah, I remember that. But uh, that's something, yeah, we can, well, we can cover that, you know, at any time too, that. Um, maybe them first four. Um, in front of the church going toward the post office are gonna turn into handicap spots.
So is that something that the church or the city could put the temporary like handicap there for Sunday morning? The rest of the week, whatever, but Sunday morning, those are. Or.
I guess we.
I don't know.
If you designated a handicaps while I I'm guessing.
Well, if you if you paint the lines and it's there forever, but I mean, I I know sometimes you can.
No.
You know, and I know I've seen other places um, that would just put.
Do I think?
Church parking, you know, like Sunday morning, there'd be a sign the church I used to go to up north. They would put the signs up.
You put permanent ones up, well, then when there's a funeral, seems like the hearse always.
The funeral, the the hearse is always crossways there.
Which.
But people know that.
But again, that goes back to common sense. A funeral is. Definitely not a scheduled event where you know what's gonna happen. It's like, yeah, you. Look the other way then. It's just the.
And then there'd be letting services, you know, coming up and somebody gonna be responsible and roll that sign out so they're there.
That's true too.
So if you just paint them in the blacktop, you have four designated parking spots.
And put.
Problem solved.
We'll put up a sign. We're gonna put sign up somehow to. Cause as well. In the winter, a road will be plowed and you will see, should see the. The markings. I'm just trying to cover all options because.
Would you put it in blue on the sidewalk? Also in front of the parking. Spots in the street, white in the street, like they did in front of the post office and then blue on the sidewalk.
On the curb.
Could very well. On the sidewalk, yeah. And then people know that when there's a funeral that uh, there'll be parked crossways in there, so. They should.
Yeah, that's just again, common sense, which. Seems to be lacking.
You know, as I said, there's a lot of people. There is none.
You know.
All right, enough on every Eli's report. Brian Severance.
Yeah, I don't have much. I covered the quality flow project. Otherwise, everything's going good. I will be taking pre-discharge samples. Yet in October or November discharge at the East Water Facility. And uh, that's about it. Everything's going great.
Perfect. All right, down to the clerk.
So. The last, after the last meeting, letters got served to the property owners that we had that were non-compliance. And that didn't do anything. And I've got done. They're in the packet. There's a contract from LJP. Their rates are not changing. So okay with you have that sign back to them.
Any discussion on the. Contract with LJP or just sign it and continue on with the service?
Yeah, I guess if we um. Didn't have any. Paris and bid, there's not much we can do. We.
I mean, I could have if council wanted me to, um, you know, I mean, I definitely can do that. Um.
But they're not raising their price.
Not raising.
Obviously, we must have thought it was all right.
It's hard to do now because, you know, they got the Kirby's here. You know, other people would have to bring in Kirby's and all that other stuff.
Can be done. It would just.
Be done, yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I mean, just until maybe the service is inadequate. Or we see a little bit of a jump, yeah, continuing problems, you know, we can reissue it or uh. Rethink it. But at this time, I guess they're doing a pretty good job. I know it fluctuates a lot during the day. Sometimes they're here right away. Sometimes they're here at three o'clock. Sometimes you're here at eleven o'clock.
Yeah, I don't know what their schedule is.
And it's not even snowing yet.
That's why they say to get them out there, what, by seven o'clock in the morning or?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So. We need a motion on that probably to uh, somebody make a motion to re-up the contract with LJP.
I'll make a motion to redo the contract with LJP for. Residential garbage facility. Go to Andrew.
Someone a second? Got seconded all in favor, say aye. I oppose. Motion carried.
And I put some information in there on the Amkin contract. It's a solar contract that was entered in in twenty seventeen. One seventeen or twenty eighteen. I cannot find any information that council approved that. So I talked to our attorney and our attorney suggested that we schedule a meeting to talk to him on. So we need to schedule a litigation closed meeting with him. So if you have any dates, yes. So if you have any dates in mind.
Okay.
Um. Like next week or?
Well, also.
Whenever.
I see the lawyer said the first and third Monday.
Yep, he's got some dates in here or he's got, yeah, dates that don't work for him. So.
I'd be in favor of a Monday night meeting.
Or. Or any Monday.
Next meeting would be the twentieth, right? Or would you be available the twentieth?
No. I won't. I leave Friday and I don't come back till Tuesday. I won't get back.
You've canceled that.
Um, that's not happening. I already got my ticket.
Um.
Still have to be October twenty seven.
How about the twenty seven?
I can make that. Is that on his? How come I don't have?
Yeah, I was trying to find that. I seen that.
Mondays. So is that?
That's a fourth.
That's a fourth Monday. Okay.
Yeah.
Um, what time?
Want to do it like? Five o'clock or people?
Five thirty or later.
Five thirty early.
Five thirty or later is what he's saying.
Five thirty?
Okay.
That work for you, Jim? Scott?
That's better if it's five thirty. I know everybody struggled to make the five o'clock one last time. But yeah, five.
And I want I'll reach out to John and Kennedy and if everything's good, I will let you all know.
All right, I'm just gonna write it on the top of this.
October twenty seventh at five thirty. And then the next topic, we gotta just um, set the truth and taxation. And we can usually do that at the beginning of our December meeting, which would be December eighth.
Yep.
So I just need a motion for that.
Somebody make a motion to set the, or do you have the truth and taxation hearing December eighth at uh, seven o'clock and the regular meeting at whatever, seven thirty?
Following, yep.
Yep. Somebody wanna make a motion to that?
Make a motion to set the meeting for the truth and taxation for December eighth at seven o'clock.
Perfect. Someone a second?
I'll second it.
Own favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carried.
Um, and then Eli and I met with um, Blue Earth County. Eric Weller regarding the hazard mitigation funding meeting. Um, that's updated every five years. So we did, we'd been spending, I spent a lot of time with him doing that. The last month or so, a couple of months probably. Um. And then I had the general assembly with Cog on the seventeenth. Um, they're working and they did update. Um, in your packet, there's the new rates to be a member of the council of governments.
One epithelism.
Yes, yeah. And they did lose a city or we lost Blue Earth County back. New York County canceled their membership. And then, um, so they're trying, but we did get Arlington joined, which is a new one.
Do you use those?
Um, yes.
Yeah, see, we we were into that pretty heavily fifteen, twenty years ago, you know? But then they had such a time with hired help that uh. It wasn't, you know, and then we chose to get out and then we did this part time thing in, but if you utilize their services.
With working with the personnel policies, um, with the updates with that E S S T and the paid family leave now that's coming up. They're definitely, it's, I use them as my HR.
Okay.
Because it's just, they're the ones that know. And then it's like they're, because they do it, but there's a lot of other cities that they're working with on that, those policies too. So then they just do, it's just easier. And they know, they know a lot more information on that than I do.
Well, you would know if it's worthy.
Well, I think it's definitely worth it. I mean, absolutely.
That's what we need to know. As far as, that's what I need to know.
Yeah, absolutely.
If you feel that, yeah, that's.
I'm gonna make a motion to re-up with that, with the additional, what is it, a thousand dollars a year, right? So, yeah.
I'll make a motion to re-up with. What do you call it?
Council of.
Council of government.
Council of government.
Well, they also did your training too.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was part of it too. So that's a lot.
That was there, yeah.
Jim made, Jim made that a motion. Someone a second?
Yeah, second it.
Amy seconded it all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carried.
How much was it before?
Um, like forty five hundred dollars is it?
Forty seven dollars, forty seven hundred for twenty five. It's going up to fifty six ninety seven for twenty six. So.
If you feel you get that much out of it, I'm.
Absolutely.
Fine with it.
Um, and let's see, where else am I? Personal policy of dates. I know um, personal committee has to set a date because we have to update the paid family leave. And then um, there's some other. Things that you guys needed to discuss.
Yeah.
Um, and also we talked about the paid family leave with council deciding to pay a hundred percent of the premium. And after going to the cog meeting, I would like to suggest the council does the fifty fifty. It's because it's a very minimal amount. And if we don't, it has to be, we have to claim it on our taxes. So if council pays the whole thing, then we have to. I have to keep track of it and it has to go into our W twos because we have to, I have to claim that. That is income or the employees do. Um, and because we're under, we are under thirty, I understood, I think, I think we're at twenty eight with fire department. So if we're under thirty, then we have a discounted rate. So then the, I think it's like point two, two percent that the city would have to pay. And then it's point four, four percent that the employee pays. Cause it drops down from point eight eight to point six six for small employees. So that's just something that personal committee, we can discuss that too in there. Um, and I did get some more information on different insurance plans. I haven't really had a chance to go over that. But I'd like to schedule a meeting maybe with personal committee to kind of discuss some of that too.
John and I have talked. We need to do that and it's just.
And just kind of figure that out. And the last thing is there's a. Quote in there from Metro Sales with your copy. Our copier's fine. He emailed me and asked me if I would present it to council again and so I said I would. So I know last time we had this conversation, council decided to use it until it no longer works and it works.
Well, we have enough toner for a century, right?
We should, yes.
I mean, we had one that ain't, probably won't work anyway.
Yeah, if you had a different one, the toner would probably be outdated. So here we sit with it. Six thousand dollars worth of toner, that'll probably.
I'm not touching that.
Yeah.
So, and then. Yeah, we had the food truck here a couple of times this last month. I thought it did well. Um, I think it, I shouldn't say that. I don't know how it did. Um, but the second time they were here, I asked and they said it was fine. Um, I did, some of the residents seemed to enjoy it. Um, one did not. And just gonna leave that there.
Well, we've heard, heard about food trucks. North Mankato has dealt with food trucks. Um, I don't have a problem with food trucks, but I do understand when people are bringing it up that. Your brick and mortar restaurants pay taxes, food trucks do not. So you're coming in and you're taking the money away from the the local businesses that pay taxes to the town. Um. A couple of the issues that were brought up, I guess that I'd like to see is. Um, whoever was quote unquote sponsoring the food truck?
Nobody sponsored it.
Where did it say?
This is what happened. The food truck came, the gentleman came in here, he asked if he could do a food truck in town. We have nothing in our ordinances that says he can or cannot. So I gave him the peddler form. And he gave, they gave me copies of their insurance, um, their inspection forms. I got their. Anything pertaining to them. I got the driver's license and they asked where they could set up and I said, I don't know. My understanding was they couldn't have it on city property. And so Eli and I talked and you could check with Dick's Locker, you could check with Dakota Mart. That's all we could tell them and they went and they told me they talked to Dick's Locker and Dick's Locker said they could set there. Now, if that's not true, that has nothing to do with the city. Um, that's what I was told. We can't control. You know.
The city of Mankato, you can't bring one in unless you have. Uh, a lot, this open, an open space, you have to provide the tables. You have to provide the facilities. Uh, that one downtown has, you know, porta potties has tables. And that is. Where they've talked about in North Mankato. They don't really have per se the open lot, but they go in and they have to have a, what they call a sponsoring business or whatever.
Oh, sure.
Cause then you're using their lot, their power, their facilities, they provide tables. That's the only thing where this is kind of. Uh, rash and I asked them and they said, by no means do you get by for twenty dollars.
Well, so like I said, I I talked and I knew this was gonna happen. So I talked to area towns. Amboy does not have an ordinance. They only ask that they don't come in like this Mexican food truck was in Amboy and in Mapleton. Amboy said, please don't come in on Wednesdays because that's Linda's Taco Day or Mexican Day for Amboy. So they didn't.
Oh.
Um, Mapleton, and they don't charge anything because they don't have anything in their ordinances that they can or cannot be there. Mapleton. Said that they could come in, they said the days that they could come in, um, because it worked with, they don't have evening restaurants, I guess. I don't know, and they allowed them to set up at the muni. And that's what they did. I mean, I really don't think we can can. Compare May Mankato, North Mankato.
No.
Because.
The only one, it's the only one I knew that.
Right. And I mean, the one years that I've been here, I've, this is the first time I've ever seen it, you know, the five years I've lived here, I've never seen one. So I don't know if it's gonna be a big issue. If it is, then I guess council maybe needs to review the ordinances and maybe set an ordinance, you know?
There, there was something that they couldn't. They can be your twenty one calendar days or of the year.
Yeah.
That's, that has to do with, yeah, that's Mapleton.
Oh.
That's North, North Mankato too.
Yeah. But yeah, we don't have anything. And I mean, like I said, some residents liked it. Um, I only heard a negative from one and.
What's that? This one?
Yes, yes, yes. Um, and I know when I talked to Amboy. She had talked to the owner of the restaurant there and she said, there's nothing wrong with a little friendly competition. That's part of being a business owner. You have to expect it. It's one day.
Yeah, well, that's why they said they they limited them to so many days a year.
Yeah.
That makes sense because again, the people that are paying taxes on a. You know, a mortar, a building.
But it's also kind of nice to give the residents a little option. As a resident, I thought it was kind of nice. It's like, hey, there's another option in town.
Yeah.
You know, why not? You know?
People like the walk up window. I mean, other businesses could do their own food trucks. People like the lockup window. I mean, other businesses could do their own food trucks. I mean, I, I mean.
Yeah.
Honestly, I mean.
And I mean, I know, um, yeah, so.
Well, um, as a business owner, I'm, I'm just gonna throw this out here. Um, we have tables and chairs and booths at the gas station and people bought their tacos and came to work and used our facilities and the facilities and bought a pop and ate their taco. So, I mean, really, I mean, uh, I'd be like going to McDonald's, getting your hamburger and cheeseburger, whatever, and going to a local restaurant and ordering a glass of water, just using their.
Yeah.
You could, you know. Correct, yep, no outside, you know, food or whatever.
Then again, uh, are they, are they inspected by the, the state of Minnesota for health?
Yeah, I have their inspection report.
You do?
Yes, I have it. That's not something, like I said, Amboy didn't even request it. Um, I asked because I, I didn't know. And I thought, well, we might as well just get all the information you have for me.
Exactly.
I mean, it's not like the city's liable anyway, because it's not ours, you know? So.
No, I went and checked it out. I can't imagine they got a lot of business. They were angled weird. They didn't have good signage. They didn't, you know? So I can't imagine, I mean, that they, they did well.
I think the first time that somebody said there was a line, now, was that three people, five people? I don't know. When I was there, there was nobody there. Um, I went there the first time, I didn't go the second. But.
I ate twice.
It looked good. The, the tacos looked really good.
First time I didn't really like what I got. That was my fault. I ordered the wrong thing.
Yeah.
The second time I went at six forty five and they were closing up, so I didn't.
Yeah, they close at seven.
Yeah, it was six forty five when I went, so.
Well, we're just, go ahead.
I, I would just imagine they probably weren't doing well, so they shut down.
Yeah, I, like you said, they didn't have signage. I was expecting maybe a little bit of signage. But, yeah, I mean, you know, they tried it and whether or not they come back next year, I don't know. But if council wants to set something, then we need to review the ordinances and we need to figure out what we can and can't do and, or they do and create ordinance.
Yeah.
As a resident, I think it was kinda cool. Um, I think it was kinda nice to have something in town. It was a day or two.
Yeah, variety is good, as long as it isn't, uh,
Right.
overabundance.
And maybe, you know, we do say, you know, you need to bring seating, you know? You need to provide seating or something, I don't know.
Um, yeah, and facilities, cause yeah.
You know, I mean, they could have went to the park too. But. You know, not, you're not gonna get people to go to the park.
I don't know about seating, because they, they have a generator running in that truck?
Yeah.
It's very, it's, I mean.
Oh, yeah, it wasn't, it's not, that place is not designed to sit at because, yeah, they have their generator running.
Yeah, you have to talk loud even in a place in order.
Yeah, or would that be something that, uh, the, my directions here, northwest corner of the park up here? Couldn't be a designated area if we wanted to do something like that.
Been better off there.
You've got, you got facilities right there they could be using. They got a few scattered tables throughout the park, yeah.
Somewhere, but that's like, that's all on them.
Got that little.
Do anything.
Enclosure, I don't know what you call that, but I, I just don't see where it should be on the other businesses downtown to supply the bathrooms, supply the tables.
Yeah, and that's where the signage.
Yeah.
That's where the signage comes in, you know?
Yeah.
I mean, I know a lot of places that say their bathrooms are closed unless you purchase something or whatever. I don't know of average, but yeah.
That seems for paying customers.
Right, right, there you go. So, anyway.
Did ever try to police that?
Well, again, you would hope, I guess all you have to do is put, I had no outside food and hopefully common sense would be, you read that, you know that. Lock the doors. Uh, it's just, it's so, like you said, so hard.
Yeah.
Common sense is a virtue to do that.
And then, yeah, the last thing I have is already said that I'll be out October twenty seventh, October seventeenth to the twenty second. I'm hoping to come in on the twenty second to do payroll, because that's the last day, otherwise I'm gonna have to take the tax.
I heard you were gonna cancel that.
Cancel what?
Your vacation. I heard it.
No.
I heard it earlier. But, uh, no, that's just kidding, crap. Um, yeah, but I do think, uh, you know, we're talking that, that is something maybe needs a little more discussion for now, as long as it doesn't get to be a.
Out of hand.
Well, like I said, it was the, I twice and.
Yeah, well, variety is good. Yes, I understand that, but, um.
And I'm pretty sure there won't be any more of the rest of those here.
Yeah, well, we have a little time. It's something that we can talk about in a slower time period, but, uh, I do think we gotta take care of our taxpayers first and then variety is good. Um, I know we went through that eighty through whatever. Do we have to go through this billing permit?
Nope, that was in the consent agenda.
Yeah, what, what does that say on the top?
Three, something, it's a business, um.
It's, uh, building up by the shop.
Is that what it says?
Oh.
Yeah, that's.
That must be his business name.
All right, well, I was trying to figure out what that said.
Yeah.
Three, oh, that's three, dib con LLC?
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
Okay, well.
Backing up on your, your notes, your meeting notes.
Yeah.
Sue, uh, you and John are gonna meet with Burkhardt and where, what was that amount? Was that three hundred thousand we were gonna move?
Um, yeah, so.
You know, because if you look at.
Yeah.
If you look at that, it makes us about a thousand dollars for every three hundred thousand we got invested. So, you know, we have that sitting here and making nothing, you know? It's, you know, so that's a very good move to move that.
Yeah.
That we can get out at any time.
Yep. Well, we can now. That's whether or not council wants to move that now or they wanna wait until, we meet with Burkhardt and then like I said, because council wanted, was talking about earmarking some dollars. And when I talked to Greg, he said, he thought it'd be better to put it in a general fund within Banyan to earmark it. Versus moving it into four M.
So talk to them first.
So. I mean, we can still do the three hundred thousand. I have to do a resolution for that. And we could still do the three hundred thousand or whatever council decided they wanted to do. Right now, I think we're down like six hundred and eighty in our checkbook.
Yeah, but you'll be getting, well, that takes until December, I think, right? To get your, you get Minnesota cities and Blue Earth County. And I don't think we have, oh.
And we have not gotten the fire department state aid. Because the fire, they haven't received the state auditors, the auditor has not received the forms from the auditor for the fire department. So. Yeah, I've been, we're talking to Phil and he's saving on it, but.
Just every year, it's getting more.
So anyway.
Then on the check register detail here, um, Helen did some welding there for the target frames. It says four hundred and eighty one dollars for, uh, just compressed gas. It must be more involved in that bill, huh?
No, that was for the tanks, um. That was for the tanks for that, for those frames.
For welding? Holy cow.
Yes. Um, but those will also be for future use for the, um.
Heard it.
Park.
Yeah.
The little words I've talked to him yesterday.
Thought I made a mark on something else too, but maybe not. Oh, and then on the revenue side here. Um, under the general fund, it says, uh, contributions and donations. Year-to-date amount is twenty five thousand. Contributions and donations, that's donations to us, right?
On where you at?
With that, under the revenue guideline, council one.
What page?
Uh, first page, page one. Well, that's probably some of the money to the fire department. That's what I was wondering, is that fire department's your contribution?
The, no, well.
That's Matt, and if somebody donates money to the fire department.
Well, that's also, um, if some of the FEMA money got put in there maybe too. I'd have to look because this doesn't break it down very well for me.
I know, uh, that's what I was wondering.
But would you have questions like this? Then these should be pulled out of the consent agenda, just going forward, so you know.
And then like you go to the next page and the interest earnings, you know, on the, uh, the water fund. And that amount there is like nine or nineteen dollars. And then if you go down to the interest earnings on the sewer fund, it's, it's only, uh, twenty six, five thousand dollars more, but the interest earnings is forty nine hundred dollars. Uh, so, how, how does that all happen, I wonder? And I guess that's things to ask Greg.
So, when I do the interest earnings, it depends on how much money in the four M fund is earmarked, I shouldn't say earmarked, is for the water. That's all.
So, okay, that money that's in the four M then, that's kinda earmarked already.
Well, according to, yeah, because when I do that, um, interest, the journal entry for the interest, that all comes from Burkhardt. That's their formula. I just plunk in the numbers.
Yep.
And it spits this out, so.
Okay, so me, you know, maybe you can ask him, you know, how that varies so much on a twenty five thousand dollar higher investment. You know, but like you say, maybe there's more complete dollars in there though, right?
Could be. Depends on how much money is in, does it say, doesn't say how much money is in the actual.
Well, the sewer fund is a hundred and.
Hundred forty seven, but how much of that is in four M?
Yeah, I know.
See, we don't, that doesn't show it on here.
He's the guy that does that, so let him answer. Yeah. All right, that's the only couple of questions I had there. I was looking over that. Um, are you pretty much done then, Sue?
Yes, I'm done, literally.
Well, I've lost my agenda. Are we almost done? Oh.
Is the agenda, that's, that's it.
Okay, um.
There is not, I'm sorry.
Unfinished business?
Yep, so November ten, we're gonna have to have a public hearing for the past two utility bills. There's two of them. Um, that have been passed, well, one of them's been passed to since before I started. The other one has just been a progressive issue. So they'll have the forms and stuff to do at the November ten meeting to certify those. They have to be to the county by November thirtieth.
All right. New business? Anybody with new business? Miscellaneous business? When will them guys be getting back to you about some of your projects, like, uh, Pope? Are they looking in what would be their best option over there?
Um, they took a whole bunch of paperwork with them, um, from uh, city shop, um, as far as some of the pipes we've lined and all this different projects that we've done in the past. They're kind of reviewing everything and seeing where we're at. I don't think they're ready to, you know, do a proposal for a new water.
Right.
I think at this point, but, um, they did get a good tour of it and explain the urgency behind why we need a new system there and, and things like that. It's kind of, they planted, digest the material that we sent with them, bring it back to us. And then meet at a council meeting to kinda explain to you where they feel you're at and all your projects are prioritized. And which ones to tackle first. And, uh, if you want them to take on and run with one of those projects, then at that point, that's when that would start. So they do plan to come back to a, a meeting and let you guys know that. And they thought it might take a month, six weeks after that date we met, just to kinda go through and digest all this because it, we give them a lot of stuff, so.
Sure. Would you, uh, you know, we're waiting for a bonding bill to see if we could ever get any help. Do you think having another new well would be a top priority because of the second one is so?
Pretty high on the list, yes, you're correct.
I mean, is that something we'd reach out and just initiate and get going on our own? Instead of waiting for a bonding bill that might take another year or two down the road?
That's a question for Ballack. They could, they could make a recommendation on that. You know, as far as the well placement on that lot. If that's where we put it, there's a very small window of earth there where that can be.
Yeah.
Because that's be so many feet off a sewer made, so many feet from your facility and things like that. So if they determine that that's the corner where it needs to be, then, uh, you, a guy could reach out to like Time Well, who did our well here and just say, hey, here's the spot. It was like, well, what would it cost? And, and you could do that, um. It just, it just that, uh, it could, if it looked like you might get that bonding bill, you'd probably get it done cheaper, you know, part of it paid for. Whereas if we do it, it's all on us.
It's all on us, yes.
So.
But we also gotta look out for, to make sure we have adequate water supply.
Yeah.
You know, for the city, you know, because our main well is used all the time. That's backup well is.
Yeah, I put out about a hundred and hundred and eighty gallons a minute. Then the one puts out four fifty.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, it'll work in a pinch, but. You know, for a major firefighting event, if you, if you, uh, got the tower to a point where the small, you know, if the big well was down and you had a, it's, it's gonna be a steamroll of coincidences where the main well was not working and, and you had a big fire and they got the tower down with that, that would be inadequate. No, but the chances of that are pretty slim. So I don't think it's like urgent, urgent, but it's something that did, needs to be on your priority list higher up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's some maintenance work that you were talking about over there that.
We get a call from Bruce, uh, I gave him a call one day and they're, they're doing a tremendously huge profit right now. And they said, once they get that wrapped up, they'll be able to get to the, take a look and, or maybe Bruce Mantafell will come out himself. He's from Javens. And, uh, they'll, they'll draw up what they need to replace those, the pipes and the pipe supports that go from the well to the filter and from the filter to the tower, uh, where it goes out to the tower. Um, a lot of that's pretty rusted and, um, yeah, I would say it probably needs to be replaced pretty soon, you know?
So, the other question I had was, uh, have we had any feedback on this school? Still nothing.
Still waiting for the interest rates to go down. It went down a quarter percent.
Yeah, in a year and a half.
Yeah.
And they expected to go down once or twice more yet this year. And what, what does stock market do today? Am I here?
Had a big surge.
Pardon?
Big surge. I have six hundred points up.
Yeah, see, it went down big time Friday.
Yeah.
So it's level.
Pretty much, yeah.
Yeah. All right. Nothing else? Somebody make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
Somebody second? Got second and all in favor, say aye.
I oppose, motion carried.
Thanks, everybody.